All right, good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one recessed meeting of the NAGC head board of commissioners is hereby called to order. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the agenda but removing the item that deals with the warranty for the piece of equipment off the consent agenda, please.
Okay, that would be D two, I believe. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda with the removal of that consent item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to come public comment. Mr. Leidy, I think you have an easy job this morning.
I do believe I have an easy job. The Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide comment at the public comment session. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, but anybody who wishes to make comments to the Board can do so. Please approach the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and I will let you know when your five minutes is up. Is anybody here to provide public comment? If not, we will conclude the public comment session.
All right, thank you, John, appreciate that. The next item is our consent agenda, from which one item was removed. And Andy, will you clarify for me that was I correct that the item that we were removing was D two? I'm not.
It was.
It was? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Then, then a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. That brings us to new business, item E one, consideration of an award contract authorization for NAGC Cove. That'll be David.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners.
Morning.
So, on December second, we received bids for the old NAGC Cove water main replacement. We're looking at approximately three, three miles of water main replacement throughout the neighborhood. We had received three bids from three separate utility contractors, two local contractors, and one contractor out around the Raleigh area. The, the bids were structured in such a way that we had three different installation methods. We had pipe bursting, we had horizontal directional drill, and open cut. We had two separate time periods for construction. We had a spring timeframe and also a fall timeframe. And so, the bidders could bid on any one of the installation methods and for either one of the time periods. So, what I'd like to do before I get into the, to the request is to just give a brief overview of the, the project. So, up here on the screen, we have an overview of the old NAGC Cove neighborhood. And if you can see, go ahead and zoom in a little bit, the lines in red represent the proposed alignment for the water line. This is the alignment for either the horizontal directional drill or the open cut. The, the alignment is different than what is existing. What exists is a combination of six inch and two inch lines throughout the neighborhood, and they are located on the opposite side of the street. So, this proposed project wants to keep the existing water in service while we're under construction. So, we start here at one fifty-eight with a eight inch tap. We have an eight inch line that runs down Old Cove Road on the north side, and then takes ninety-degree turn down Cobia Way on the east side, and runs all the way through to the south and to the west for a proposed connection through the NAGC head links golf course over to Links Drive. That is the exist, the existing route right now, as it currently exists, by trying to provide a loop connection, which gives you your best water flow dynamics within the system. So, this is Sandpiper Terrace, which is a continuation of Cobia Way, comes down, hits Roanoke Way, and then is a line through the golf course underneath the cart path, and then connects over to Links Drive, which is over here on the right-hand side of the There are also branch lines that are going to be installed here on the lower side of the screen. This is Roanoke Way and Blue Marlin Way. The proposed alignment is on the west side of each one of those streets. There's also a connection through Albicore, which runs from west to east, through Pamlico Way, and then also to each one of these cul-de-sacs here, as shown on the screen. So, it's, it encompasses about a hundred and sixty-eight driveways with three hundred services, so it's a pretty large-scale project, and it, and it's pretty complex. And so, when, when we receive bids, we looked at the two different methods, and with the the low prices that were submitted. EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services submitted the lowest price for open cut, and they also submitted the lowest price for horizontal directional drill. The price for the open cut was below our budget, and so, we're, we're well within the, the current and allowable budgeted funds for the project. What staff would like to do is look at ways on how we could potentially reduce further impacts. We acknowledge the fact that open cut is probably the most invasive installation method, and so, we think that there are some efficiencies that can be achieved by looking at maybe a hybrid with, looking at concentrated areas where we could potentially do some drilling to reduce some of those impacts. And I think the other efficiency that we can potentially achieve is take a look at those areas where we open cut, especially across driveway aprons, maybe provide something that is a little bit more user-friendly than what is currently designed. Right now, the way that it's structured, there's a two-and-a-half-foot wide trench, so each driveway, there would be a two-and-a-half-foot wide cut in order to achieve that water line installation. We think by going ahead and widening that and creating more of an apron that could be replaced with this construction, I think in the end, it's gonna look nicer, and I think that the residents are gonna be a little bit more pleased with the outcome and look of that finished product. So, the, the request today is to authorize the town manager to enter into the construction contract, and that would be for a bid amount not to exceed one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, and that would be to EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services for that amount, and this is for the open cut installation So, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have pertaining to the project. I did want to note that we have reached out to the golf course and Club Corp, so we've been speaking to them for the past six months. There's gonna be an easement that needs to be widened from what currently exists. We have passed that along to them for their review. We've also reached out to the old NAGC Cove POA representatives, so they can canvas some of the other board members, as well as speak to one of the residents in there who has offered to serve up as liaison. So, our path in moving forward would be to go ahead, send out notices to each one of the affected property owners in the neighborhood, and then set up a virtual meeting, so we could go ahead and give an overview of the project and set up expectations on what to expect during the course of construction. We would anticipate that to occur in early January. The, the contractor and speaking with them, they are ready to move on this project and could start as soon as mid-January, and we would like to just make sure that we give enough advance notification and address as many homeowner concerns upfront as we can.
All right, thank you. For questions, I'm gonna start on this end, 'cause it's Mike's neighborhood, and I wanna hear from you last.
Yes, one.
Any questions?
You had just talked about how, how holding a virtual meeting. I, I hope that if there's some residents out there that may not be able to remotely join in on a meeting, that there's a way to reach out to them, that they just don't have one option to, to ask questions.
Yes, sir. We would be glad to go ahead and meet with people individually, to go ahead and discuss their direct, direct impacts to their properties, and I, I think as long as we can constantly communicate with those board members, with the liaison, we can try to address as many people's concern as possible.
I remember from talking to the manager yesterday afternoon, we're thinking that it could, the majority of the project could be done and could possibly be completed by the spring?
Yes, and right now, the way that the, the bid and the project manual is structured, they're given a seven-to-eight-month timeframe to complete construction. In speaking with the low bidder, he thinks that they can do it within the five-to-six-month timeframe. So, I, I think what we would like to do is, we would like to get, to utilize the existing verbiage in the, in the contract, which says that it establishes a completion date of May twentieth, and then they would go ahead and be able to commence in, in September, September fifteenth. What we would like to do is evaluate their progress, let's say, in April, see how far along they are, and we may come back to the Board at that time with potential time extension if they could get it done within a June timeframe and before we hit the peak summer season.
Thank you.
Good, all right, thank you.
David, as part of the project, with all the driveway cuts that are going to occur, people will still be able to ensure that their driveways are not gonna be unusable for a week at a time?
No, so, how this would be structured is, they would go ahead, they would cut, and then they would fill that in with temporary gravel. And they would install the water line, replace it, and what they would like to do is sequence it, so they, they'd look at it like in two-thousand-foot segments. So, you would go ahead, install the first two-thousand feet, they would come back, get that line into service, and then restore that entire area before they moved on to the next section.
Thank you.
Good, all right, thank you.
David, I spoke to several people that would prefer this project to start to finish, and I know that's why you're saying that we, you know, look at it in April and see where it is. As, from my point, the money that you're wanting us to authorize, with my understanding of using both lateral, what's that called, lateral?
Directional.
Directional cut and?
Open cut.
Open cut, is that enough to do that? At the same time, are you gonna be coming back to us?
Yes, and, and thank you. I forgot to mention that point, and that, that's a key point. What we would like to do, and we've been working with the contractor about a potential hybrid option, so we're asking the Board today to authorize the base bid amount just for the open cut. As we work with the contractor to figure out what these additional costs are for the driveways, as well as looking at areas where we can take advantage of horizontal directional drill, we would want to come back at a future meeting with a change order request, and that could be as soon as the January meeting. And when we, when we look at it, we're gonna be looking at doing that within the allowable budgeted funds.
And, and the, the route in which all this is taking place, there is a lot more, in this neighborhood, a lot more landscaping that you're gonna be dealing with on that side of the road versus the other side where the water line currently is. Have we set aside anything to address how we're gonna handle that? Would that be that second option? Because in, in talking to some folks as early as yesterday, they've got stonework, mulch work, and multiple bushes right where you're proposed to cut through. So, you know, we sit to deal with that financially and respectively to these citizens?
We have. So, right now, we've looked at the alignment, and we've looked at those above-ground interferences, and we have come to the conclusion that we're gonna make field adjustments in order to minimize those above-ground impacts. In addition, those areas that we are currently looking at have those concentrated areas where we have landscaping, where we have trees. So, for instance, up here on the screen, and I don't know if you can see the cursor, but starting here at Sandpiper Terrace, that we would be looking at doing a horizontal directional drill all along this length, all the way down till we hit Roanoke Way. We would also be looking at doing horizontal directional drill in this area right here along Blue Marlin Way, and then the same down here for Roanoke Way. There's some significant landscaping in here, especially right here at the street returns, both here at the intersection of Roanoke and Sandpiper Terrace, as well as Blue Marlin and Sandpiper Terrace. So, we're looking to preserve those areas and try to account for any trees or any above-ground items like bulkheads that may interfere. Are we gonna be able to take care of all those? No, but I think that we can take care of a majority of them. Excuse me. Right, and we will, we want to ensure that we have a contingency available to us within the budget to account for some of those items that we may need to provide some additional restoration efforts, above and beyond what we would typically incur.
So.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. All right, good. All right, thank you, David. And so, the, I've lost it. So, if you'll repeat the amount, or if somebody has that in front of them and is ready to make a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we award the contract to EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services, LLC, and the contract not to exceed one million, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eight.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, excellent. Look forward to this thing happening. The next item on our agenda is item E two, the Public Works Master Plan. All right, still you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so, as you all know, we've been working on the Public Works Master Plan here for the good part of the past year, and recently, we advertised a request for qualifications to carry forward the design permitting and construction of those facilities. The RFQ, we, we went ahead and advertised here within the past several months. We had four very strong submissions from BMH, Via Design, DJG Design, and the firm of Oakley Collier. We went ahead and we conducted interviews, and the selection committee, which was comprised of myself, Eric Lawson, Public Service, Public Services Director, as well as Andy Garment, Town Manager, had determined that the firm of Oakley Collier provided the best qualified both submission and interview that we had conducted as part of that process. I think what we really were impressed by was the, the confidence of the design team, how comprehensive they were in the services that they provide, the depth of their experience, and also their related coastal construction. They recently completed a project over in Dare County with the Health and Human Services Building. We've got some great references from them, and were really impressed overall by their presentation. So, we have been working recently in order to go ahead and establish some base services in carrying this project forward. I know right now, we're looking at a fast-track schedule for this project, and so, we set forth a list of base services to include some initial programming and permitting and design, really taking this through the site plan phase and getting all permits in hand. And so, included in your board packet is a proposal that has been submitted by Oakley Collier for this. It's above and beyond what we currently have budgeted, so when we request an action from the Board, we'll be looking for a budget amendment in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in order to go ahead and cover the design services proposal. But before I get into that, I wanted to go ahead and bring up Mr. Tim Oakley and Ann Collier to go ahead and introduce them to the Board and answer any questions that you may have regarding any of their experiences or the details of their proposal. So, without further ado, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Members. We appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning. We, we were very excited a few weeks ago when we came down and presented to your team the prospects of the project, and as David said, we've put together what we think is a very comprehensive team of civil engineering, environmental engineering, structural, mechanical, architectural. We've all had experience working in the area. We have ongoing projects in Dare County, and we will be here for the next several years working on some of those projects. So, we're excited, and this project is right in our wheelhouse, that we, we have some ongoing public works facilities that we've been working on and in the planning stage. So, this, this was the perfect project, and we saw it and said, let's, let's put our hat in the ring and, and see how it goes. As David said, there's, there was kind of an aggressive schedule to get this first phase started and trying to get this stuff implemented, and there, as you well know, there's a lot of regulatory pieces with the various agencies that dealing with, with CAMA and DQ, all of them. So, as our engineers put, as we put together our proposal, they took that in consideration, as well as the survey topographical piece, we, we identified that there are a number of significant trees we thought owned that property, and that we wanted those identified so that as we start this design process, we can work with and around, try to minimize that impact. And as you well know, the site has some challenges, and so, this is not a, a straight-up start, hit the button, go, and we get to the end of it, so that was pretty slick. That was just as smooth as it could be. As all projects go, I'm sure we'll have fits and starts, and, but we, we, we get to the end. Ann and I have been partners for twenty-some years, and we always work in pairs. With our firm, you, you will always see at least two of us, if not three or four. We, we've, over the years, we've always felt that we can sit in the meeting and hear everybody say what they say, we can light our notes, but we all hear different things. And so, for us, it has worked really, really well to go back, digest that, compare what we've heard, and, and try to get, get the answer, the right answer. Again, we've proposed this, we're gonna propose this in two phases, and I'll stick my neck in the noose. I guess the first phase doesn't necessarily mean the second phase goes forward. I, I guess that's up ultimately to the Board. So, we, we sent a proposal in for that first phase, and with timeline, they're trying to get all this approved and done by late May, and the necessary approvals.
Okay.
And we'd love to answer any questions.
Cool, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Oakley, for being here. How much of the current plan that they've been working on for the last few months have you actually looked at and you feel is feasible? And how mu, you know, based on what you're gonna do here, how much of that would be redone, redoing work from the previous?
They, they, David has shared the study, the PowerPoint, I, I believe, that was presented to, to the Board, and the documentation that was with that. We, we looked at it to, to make, and get us an understanding and try to help put together the proposal, but as we said in the interview, our first step is to revisit, to make sure we fully understand how things got to where they are and what they could be, and given the nature of design, we, we always look for, is there a better way? Is there a less impactful way to do this? So, we're not discarding the previous study. We hope to improve on and work with some of it. There's, from a, it's a good starting point for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're right. The, the site is very challenging with the limitations as to size, for one thing, and building things in phases. I was happy hearing you talk about preserving vegetation where you could. That's very important as well, so look forward to seeing the progress.
Good, thank you. Kevin?
Mike, ask my question.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you very much. Excited to have you all working with us and look forward to your progress.
Thank you.
So, we need two actions. The first is to approve the, for the town manager to enter the professional services contract for the amount on the, on the summary there, and then the second would be to approve the budget amendment.
Correct.
So, a motion on the contract would be in order.
Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a professional services contract with the design team of Oakley Collier for an amount not to exceed three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you. All right, and the next item would be the budget amendment.
Make a motion that we approve a budget amendment in the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be items referred to and presentations from the town attorney.
John? Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present today.
Okay, thank you. That brings you up, Andy, for items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
So, I think David wanted to go ahead and give the Board a brief update on the post Orient Beach Nurishment Project.
Yes, at your last meeting, we gave an update as to where we currently stand with the permitting process for the two thousand twenty-two Post Orient Beach Nurishment Project. Had noted that there was a hiccup that we had regarding one of the state permits, and that was the four oh one water quality certification. It was our understanding that that would be issued within the next several weeks. We're now two weeks past that point, and we still don't have it as of yet, but we're staying on top of it. So, place some calls to the head of the Division of Water Quality to see where we are with that issuance. On the other permits, there's been some movement as far as draft permit conditions have been drafted. There's been some correspondence back and forth, so they're trying to position the issuance of those permits shortly thereafter this four oh one water quality certification issue corrects itself. So, we did go ahead and have a conference call with the contractor last week, the town manager, and myself, and the representatives of Moffitt and Nickel. The contractor is amenable to going ahead and extending the bid validity period thirty days, and that would be from, I believe it's January fifth, to, through to the end of the month in order to...
in order to secure that bid pricing and therefore giving us the additional time to work through this permit issue.
This permit issue, is it similar for all other beach nourishment projects that would be in the pipeline at this point?
In the pipeline, it's my understanding that the Northern Beach projects, that they had already secured their permit, but this would also affect the Avon and Buxton project as well.
And is there anything that we can do at, at this point? I mean, are we still waiting on the court? It's not, it's not part of a political process in North Carolina, there's nothing that we can really do about this.
It's, it's my understanding that, no, at this point, it's not a political process. It's, I guess, just being able to go through an internal procedural process. As, I'm trying to make contact right now with the, the representative from that agency, and I'll get some feedback from him. If we feel as though it's going to be delayed, you know, another two or three weeks, I'll go ahead and I'll notify the town manager and see if there's other action that we could probably, that we could possibly take in order to encourage the movement on this.
Okay, thank you, I haven't been nervous before now, but now I'm getting nervous about this. Kevin?
Renee?
I'm just concerned about the impacts of the delay as far as the timeline for the project. But I'll speak with the manager, if that's okay.
Yes.
We, we, we did speak with the contractor about that. You know, is this going to delay their time period? At this particular time, no. And, and so, if we can get things resolved by the end of January or even potentially the end of February, that no, it should not impact that construction schedule. Right now, the construction, actual construction, you know, we're looking at about a thirty-day window, sixty days in total with mobilization and demobilization, all things considered, weather, mechanical issues, things of that nature.
And the start date for actual putting sand on the beach would be approximately what?
May 1.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Let me answer any questions I have.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are you staying up for the Nags Head Drain, for the Old Nags Head Place Drainage Project?
Yeah, I think Andy and I can go ahead and tag-team this if, if needed. So, we had a meeting with some of the representatives from the Nags Head Place, Property Owners Association here recently, and there was two items that we discussed. We talked about the funding, and then we talked about potential scheduling for this project. They recently had a meeting where they voted on this, and they had a, a majority of the homeowners wanted to move forward with the project. And, and so, now they're going to move forward with an assessment, and it looks like they probably won't get all those funds in place until maybe early fall. And so, that may align itself. They, they said spring, I guess, for the assessment, but to get all the funds in place, I think they had given a fall timeframe. And so, that may align itself well if we were to move forward with the planning, design, and construction. Right now, we have not initiated any professional design services for this. We do have a survey proposal that we received from Coastal Engineering, which is one of our on-call surveyors. That amount is $19,300. And so, for us to move forward with a project, we would be asking the board for us to be able to enter into a contract to initiate those services so we can move forward with the surveying and then design. We would look at bidding this out in a summer timeframe for potential fall construction.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any question?
The money, you said $19,000 and something?
$19,300, yes.
And then what else, what other funds would we be spending to prepare for the project?
Everything else would be taken care of internally, so, we, we would do the design in-house. As we get closer to construction, I think we would include construction stakeout services in the contractor's scope of work. So, really, be, other than that, that pretty much takes care of, of, of the town's portion.
And did y'all, from talking to them, do you feel confident that they will get the money, like they said they will?
Yes, according to them, they had voted on it, they had a majority vote, and so, they're going to move forward with that assessment.
Mike?
Nothing.
Good, okay, all right, thank you. Anything I leave out?
No, I think the money, the money we identified in the budget, we wouldn't be a budget amendment or anything like that, so, we would move forward just basically from consensus from the board. And then, you'll be planning to do design work, and we wouldn't sign a contract with any contractor until we have the money and an agreement with the association in hand. We would need that to pre-put the contracts, so.
Which sounds like probably fall. Okay. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Before we do that, we have that item from the consent agenda that we, we moved. So, let's go back to item D2.
Yes, I've got it here.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you, I had it removed because while I totally support the warranty, I think we ought to be able to pay for it, not finance $13,000. I just think we need to go ahead and pay the funds. I'm sure we've got money somewhere, even if it's from fund balance, but I just don't see financing $13,000.
Okay, all right, so, Cam, do we have that money available to do that?
I had...
How would you do that?
The mayor had mentioned this to me, and I did speak with the finance officer, so, she put together an alternative budget amendment that we could put up in front of the board.
Ah, okay, very good.
So, Amy had provided me with a budget amendment, a revision to 6.2, which would transfer $24,059 from occupancy tax to capital outlay equipment. And that, that's additional funds requested for facilities maintenance later pay-go for the five-year warranty. So, that, that would be the alternative amendment in order to not finance the warranty.
Okay, all right.
Then I would make a motion to adopt that budget amendment in the amount of $24,059.
Yep, correct.
Second, all right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right, now Board of Commissioners' agenda.
That's okay.
No, don't, thank you for keeping me straight. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing.
Commissioner Cahoon?
No.
Me?
Just to wish the staff a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the, for us throughout the year.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, and we do appreciate, that's, we've had, I meant to say this the other night, we've had a couple of hard years, a couple of interesting years, a couple of years that have kept people on their toes and forced some creative change, and appreciate the way staff has, has done that, and...
I, I would say that the staff would like to wish the board happy holidays as well, and thanks for all of your support during this time.
Thank you, thank you very much.
One of the things that's occurred in, in this holiday season and in the times of all the tragedies going on, the scammers are out, I'd like us to put a notice somewhere, either Roberta through our social media or police through their webpage, about, be careful. If you want to give, give through an accredited agency. Don't fall into prey from emails or phone calls. Please protect your money and give where giving is appropriate. Just be careful, because it's, it is out there.
It's, it's, it's bad and it's creative.
They try to make websites look familiar, but...
Yes.
You know, pay attention to where you're giving to help others.
Yes. One of my employees got one the other day, it was a fake, because they didn't have anything on the way, but it was, your order's been shipped, click here to track, and it was a false link. So, unfortunately, they knew it before, because your instinct would be to click that link if you've ordered something, without even looking twice at it. And so, you know, the, the British, they're the equivalent of, of pirates. You know, when the British sent the navy over here because the pirate problem was so bad and it was so disruptive to commerce, and that's how the pirate problem got taken care of. And these, these folks, we, we need, we need some force to string a couple of these people up, you know?
If we could hang them, that'd be great.
Yeah, it would, it's, it's...
If you could catch them.
It's, that's the thing. Very good, I don't have anything to add this morning. Any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, and that brings us to adjournment, and a motion to adjourn would be in order. Oh, I do have one thing, I'm sorry, before we go. I, I've talked to everybody. The, the workshop in January would be the 25th instead of the 26th. Everybody was as clear as they were for the 26th for that. And so, to accommodate a class that Commissioner Sanders needs to attend, we will move to the 25th, and that is all we have, and now a motion to adjourn would be in order. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Thank you.